Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order on August 24, 2020 at 6:01. Until further notice to keep our members and staff safe and to comply with RSA 91-A, the State of Emergency and Governor's orders, restriction on public gatherings, the town of all is moved from in-person meeting to remote audio participation meetings. Only attend the meetings, audio or video, visit our website www.alton.northampton.gov. On the day of the meeting for instructions or telephone the Selectmen's Office 603-875-2113 or 603-875-0229. There continues to be no public input at this time. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion as we approve the agenda as written. Second. They work out Paul.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Virgil, yes. Mention who's in the meeting?
No.
All right. It's on the donation acceptance for traffic safety devices. Josh, you want to explain how they can raise their hand and stuff?
Use that here. To raise hand if you're using Zoom on a computer, use the raise hand button. That would be found at the bottom bar Zoom. There's a hand icon and underneath it says raise hand. If you're using a telephone, dial star and then nine. That's a star and then nine to raise your hand.
Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing. Brian, would you like to speak on this?
Sure, just give a quick recap as to what this is all about. So I have two residents in town who wish to make an anonymous donation in the amount of $12,650. That donation would be used specifically for solar powered driver feedback sign, which is one of these. It's going to be hard to see on the camera, but it's similar to, it's the radar trailer that we have. It's a radar sign, independent, fixed mounted, it's solar powered, that would go on either a fixed mounted post or telephone pole by the Back Bay Bridge, signifying the speed reduction that's required coming into the bay from the Guilford side of Route 11. And what it would be able to do is we could program it with the posted speed limit. If they're going too fast, it will flash too fast, slow down. There's some indicator lights that come on as well to gain the driver's attention, to let them know that they're traveling too fast approaching the area where pedestrians congregate. The second purchase would be for a solar powered, rapid flashing, beacon pedestrian crosswalk sign. What that is, is they're dual crosswalk signs. Right now, if you go down to the bay, you see that there's a yellow sign with a pedestrian with their arm out, signifying the crosswalks. So we wouldn't have additional signage to those. We would actually be taking the place of those signs, except instead of it just being a static sign, it would be the same sign with the pedestrian, yellow sign, and on the bottom, it would have a remote button, all solar powered. So when you wanted to cross the street from either side, you push the button, there's a 20-second flash of lights to whichever side the pedestrian is on to gain the driver's attention, so that they can yield with the appropriate amount of time. Too many times, we've had close calls down in the bay where people jump out into a crosswalk in between cars and pedestrians, I mean motorists, just don't have enough time to stop in between the crosswalks and the congestion. Plus, you have cars that are parked on congested weekends like this weekend. So the thought behind this is that these crosswalk signs would be utilized at that first crosswalk on the backside of, I mean of the four Back Bay Bridge. It would be the last crosswalk where they utilize, the kids from the conference center and stuff utilize that dock by that one. Yep, for water skiing, and there's a lot of traffic there. The other thought behind this is these individuals want to provide this donation not only for that area right there, but to use it as maybe a jumping point or a leaping point for the town to strategically outfit the rest of our sidewalks with fixed mounted signaling devices instead of the traditional knockdown pedestrian signs that go on the centerline. We're having too much damage done to them. People are moving them out of their way when they feel like it because they're in the way or they're obstructing traffic. So we find them, sometimes people throw them over the bank and we found them over the bank and towards the water. And a lot of times, it's mostly damage from tractor trailer units or large vehicles, oversized loads. We can't get them out of the way. When they permit, they permit through the state, so we don't know they're coming through, and then they've taken down our crosswalk signs. And it's just, it's a temporary fix to a permanent problem. And we would like to make this step in the right direction towards a permanent solution. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has about it.
Neither one of those flash how fast the person's going, right, the speed limit? I mean the speed that they're traveling.
No. What it does, it says too fast or slow down. You can program, you do have the ability, actually, I take that back, you do have the ability to program your, the speed, just to flash up their speed if you want. Our intention was to utilize it in a sort of a directive motion manner by flashing up too fast, slow down.
I kind of like that.
Yep, yep. So the model of sign that we're looking at doing is they're full, what they call a matrix sign, meaning it has multiple applications. We have directional arrows, they have slow down, too fast, sharp curve, they have the speed, plus you can display fine amounts if you want. So it's really a multifaceted device that we can utilize anywhere the town sees fit at that point.
This also, these are solar powered batteries. How often, I know I'd asked this question once before, how often do batteries change?
My understanding is five to seven years.
Five to seven years. And is there a cost that you know what the cost would be?
I don't at that time because it's so far out at that point, they don't really give you definitive cost because it fluctuates and costs change at that point. But it's rare that we have to change the batteries. It's not like a yearly maintenance thing or anything like that. And there are no other, any kind of fees or software fees or anything else that goes along with this.
Any other questions? Do you have any questions from the attendees? We'll bring the public hearing to a close. What is the board's wishes?
I think we should accept the donation. You as well.
Virgil's, yes. Phil?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Donation is in the affirmative. On the new business, discussion with emergency management team. Good afternoon.
I think John's going to come over, isn't he after or?
Yeah, I think he said he was going to pop by just in case there was anything he could help with as well. So if you want, I mean, you're welcome to get started if you want to go ahead and, did you have specific questions you wanted to ask or are you looking more for?
I actually requested it to be on the agenda.
Okay.
I was surprised it was actually going to be this quick, but you know, we've opened up the hikey room. I don't know how you're doing the social distancing there. Obviously, that's a smaller room for other people to have to clean afterwards, but I think we're at a point now, I've got a lot of constituents saying, we really would like to be all the 10 meetings. And I'm looking at the setup that we have here, and I'm wondering if we couldn't just designate certain chairs, keep the six foot all the way around, maybe we'd get seven or eight people here, and then afterwards, all that would have to be disinfectant would be those six or seven chairs. And then we could do like we're doing tonight, using the museum too for overflow. But things are opening up everywhere. There haven't been serious problems down at the bay with the concerts going on. I know, I played one of them, that went fine. I think people at the car show last weekend were actually, for the most part, social distancing on their own. Families stayed together like they do down at the bay. And I haven't been to the church services, so I don't know how that's been going, but that was the first thing that we opened up. And I just think it's time that maybe we allow the public to start attending our meetings, even if it has to be a limited amount, maybe, I don't know, would be a sign up, first sign up, you know, first come, first served basis, or open both colleagues so we could have seven or eight people. That's just my thought, and I wanted to bring it up just to see what you guys have to say because I don't come to the emergency team meetings anymore.
Sure, sure. No, it's definitely a legitimate question. We talked about this, we discussed it on Wednesday as well. It hasn't been on our radar as an immediate opening point because of the work that we were doing on the restrooms again, and the restrooms open. As you know, we've sort of repeated this several times through our meetings and my briefings for the board is, is one of our big concerns too, is taxing our resources here at town when it comes to disinfecting. We've been opening things slowly because we're not sure exactly where that tipping point's going to be, where we can no longer keep up with disinfecting and appropriate methods. As you know, we only have a limited amount of personnel that are designated to clean, the other ones are helping out as well. And that's been one of the main topics of sort of watching where we're going. Because right now, as you know, well, you may not be aware, but the other thing that we're contending with right now is the fact that we haven't opened up the senior center yet. So the senior center is another big event where you have seniors that are playing, you know, that have planned events is what I meant to say, you know, when they come in, they congregate. It's an important service, but on the flip side of that, the town has that contract with the CAP program, but it doesn't include any cleaning, any disinfecting, anything. So we're, and I have a formal request from the CAP program as well, sort of requesting where we're going to be at with that. So these are all things that are funneling in right now, and we're trying to mitigate this issue step by step because if we just open everything up and overburden our resources and what we have for materials, for cleaning materials, then we're going to be forced to go back and start closing things. The other issue that has been raised and been brought up is that, okay, now the hearing can take over. The other issue that we've been talking about as well is the fact that, you know, it'd be much worse if we opened something and then backtrack and closed it. We have mentioned in several of the meetings, the idea of, and when some board members were attending the meetings, when they were more regular and frequent, we had reached the subject of hiring out some cleaning services. That's still something we're exploring, but we haven't seen much interest in expending that money or utilizing those funds. I mean, I know it's a, you know, it's hard to balance that out as to what's appropriate right now because we don't know exactly the full impact on our revenues as a community this is going to take. So that's why we're, you know, in this position where we're taking slow steps, aside from also monitoring the medical side of things and what we're seeing and what's going on. I'm going to let Jim talk a little bit more to what he sees as far as the medical side and what the numbers are saying and the trending. But one other thing I just wanted to mention before I turn it over to him is, you know, the other big key turning point that we have coming up right now is the school, is returning to school. That is a very touchy issue throughout the entire state right now. And in the state right now, you have, we have school districts that have gone to the point where they're completely remote, they're refusing to allow any student back to school in September. Concord, well, John. Concord is one of the biggest, bigger school districts, Manchester as well is doing it. A lot of other schools like ours are doing a hybrid system. But I recently had, you know, had conversations with school administrators for our districts here because we had to get some paperwork signed for, you know, MOUs, things like that with the SRO stuff, and we talked about it. And it's very challenging for them to kind of prepare for the fact that there's one case in the school. You pretty much shut down instantaneously. They had to plan ahead so that they could do, basically flip a switch. And flipping that switch means that everybody's already prepared, they've already issued out and divvied out all of their tablets and everything to students and families, so they're already ready. So the minute something does happen, they're going to pull the plug and go to a remote option until they can disinfect the school, go through, figure out exactly a chain of exposure, everything else, that's all going to take weeks. And they may not return depending on how widespread it is or whatnot. So there's a lot of unknowns going into September with that. So I would say, and again, I am going to turn it over to the other gentleman too as well, and anybody enlists as well, anybody who else from the team has points to bring up. We are looking forward and looking at opening this up and looking at opening other things up. We just still need to take a slow and measured approach to it. And right now, until we see what happens with the school and what kind of, you know, statewide and what that does to our state and what the numbers look like, I really feel that it's important to wait out another 30 days before we revisit this as far as the meetings go because it's not like the meetings are shut down. They are functioning, we're getting town business done, they're being viewed, people can see them, we're not disturbing the ability to get those to function. I understand that from a traditional standpoint, having the board access to the, or the public direct access to the board, I know that's important. I've been in the community long enough to know it's very important to people, and we're not taking that lightly. But at the same time, you know, we would be the first group, all of us, to be criticized if we did, we made too big of a leap too quick and something breaks out from town, breaks out especially amongst town employees because the hit financially is going to be very large.
Opening downstairs seems to have worked out well. And that's gone smoothly over the past four weeks, five weeks, that seems to be moving along. We did, I was present in the hikey room, there were seven of us in the room with social distance. That went well.
Yeah, with conservation, so.
And so that's, it's a step in the right direction, we're moving forward. It's something I have to agree with Phil, that it is a lot better for the public to be able to attend the meetings here. So as things move on, hopefully, you know, you can see your way through, especially after the school and see how it goes.
Sure. And you know, one of the big things with our discussions about the hikey room too, Jim brought it up when we were talking earlier today about it, was the fact that we did set that up for the smaller boards and committees because they, you know, traditionally don't have much, you know, much public involvement or anything like that. And a lot of them are smaller boards to begin with. The one stipulation that would be hard for this board to deal with is the fact that we set, the stipulation is, is once we hit that capping point in the hikey room, they have to just continue and adjourn the meeting. And that's what we're trying not to put that in place because if we do what you're saying and we look at just putting a fixed number amount of people in that, you get to a hot button issue on your agenda, and you're going to have to adjourn your meeting immediately. And we have no fallback to that. So we do have to figure out an appropriate plan before we do move forward so that we have that fallback because we don't want to start adjournment of board meetings prematurely because then we're going to fall behind as a community trying to get a necessary business done.
James, any of those meetings in the hikey room been adjourned?
To my knowledge, no. My knowledge, no.
Conservation has. Bob?
I'm sorry, I write later, but reference that issue, open it up. Now, the restaurants are up to 100%. They still have to maintain six foot. You can maintain six foot and you can put a lot of people. I've come to a lot of Selectmen's meetings before I was selecting, I never saw too many people unless there was some real issue. And, well, I've been patient. I don't like talking to people on the telephone doing business here. And I've had, there's three or four people that have really come to me and asked me, when the heck are you going to start opening up your meetings? Other towns have done it. I was talking with Selectmen in Hilton. There's a couple other towns. I understand where you guys are coming from, but the sooner the better.
Do we hire a cleaning company to come in and disinfect after every meeting?
Well, we're hiring one now. Well, who cleans after we meet?
The town people, the town parks and recs, the grounds and maintenance.
We're hiring them. We're hiring them.
We're not hiring extra people. Can I interject for a minute here? We've got to look at what the benefit, we use the term substantial justice in the, substantial justice, when we're looking at things with the zoning board, what substantial justice means, does the benefit to the individual or to a few weigh the detriment to the general public? In this case, I think that it would be a detriment to the general public. We have to look at the big picture here. We've got two or three people that want to come to a meeting, and I want them to be in this meeting also. But we don't have a ton of people coming in here, we don't have a lot. And then to add that extra stress and extra hours, we're looking at overtime, we're looking, we've got two guys, if you say, people say parks and recs, parks and grounds and maintenance, you forget it's two people in gabbie, two guys in gabbie, three people responsible for cleaning everything in this town, bathrooms, which we've opened up the public bathrooms so we can accommodate the public. You know, they come in every, I'm here at 6 o'clock earlier every morning, they're here every morning doing their thing, but they can only, you know, there's only two people to do all this. If you want to, if you look at it, hire an extra people, do overtime, that's your decision. But in my opinion, based on what we've discussed and what we've experienced since this all began, was that the benefit is not there. Detriment is far outweighs the benefit because of the detriment to the town overall in finances and stretching our already stretched personnel thin. So it's really, to me, there is no, we don't, we're not even here. We're way off balance, and it's off balance to the negative to open this back up. And once we do that, then we're going to have other boards that are going to want to, oh, it's just a few people, it's this, this, this. We're at a point we can't pick and choose, yes or no, all or nothing. And that's how we're going to stay safe. And that's how we want to keep this building safe. That's, you know, we've been sitting on this for four months now, watching all of this. We're trying to go forward, you know, and we are going forward, but you know, the benefit to having the bathrooms down and open in the bay is a major thing. That's a major benefit to the public. Opening up this room for one board so three people could come in and sit at it is not, that's not there, there's no benefit. No benefits. I understand you don't want to talk to people and, yeah, it's always better to be face to face with people whenever you can. Our world has changed, and it's never going to change back completely. This is as simple as 9/11. You know, we don't want to have to face the fact that things have changed, and they're going to be changed for a long time. The State of Emergency still exists, and it's going to exist for quite a while to come. And if they start seeing spikes in the restaurants and everything else, all that, they're going to back up. They're trying to step forward and give a little more, but why did it, it's Bike Week. Why didn't all the bars close on Bike Week? Because they don't want to face that risk. That's a major hit for them. They did it voluntarily. So I don't think that the benefit of opening up this room for the two, three or four members of the public who come in is worth it. The detriment far exceeds the benefit. That's how we, you know, that's what we're trying to look at, we're trying to look at the big picture here. And I understand, and I understand.
I understand where you're coming from, believe me, probably believe me, I understand it. That's your job. My job is representing the public and total public, I don't feel is jeopardized by us opening these meetings. You people do, and you people are the ones who make the decision. So I'm just, you can be my employer.
One of the, one of the things you have to think about by opening this up more, if something goes poorly, we're going to end up having to close downstairs again. That's a big step we don't want to take.
If something goes poorly downstairs, we're going to just have to close that back up.
That could happen. That's what we're going to do. We're trying to avoid that. And downstairs where people are coming in and out.
But if you don't throw rocks at glass, you'll never break glass. So, I mean, but I, I, you know, Jim, it's just that I can't understand it. We, if we had big crowds here, I could really understand it, but we don't. I just feel it's an important thing, the public being at Selectmen's meetings. But I can understand where your gentleman are coming from, maybe I put a little more heat on you.
I do understand.
No, I mean, you know, you make some decisions earlier.
I do understand, and I do understand that, you know, it's important to see how the schools react, it's important to see how that goes, that's like basically the next step.
Right.
And that's something that we needed to know, and what we were thinking, what you guys were thinking. Again, we haven't been to the last few emergency team meetings, so, and now that totally makes sense, just let's wait a little bit longer to see how the schools do, to make sure so nothing gets stepped back where we have proposed schools, and slowly go from there. And I have to agree with that.
True. No, and it's definitely, you know, the dialogue is really good, right? Nobody has a, you know, we all agree that we need to communicate, we need to talk back and forth, and we need to have these discussions so that we can, you know, sort of compromise or find a good balance. So I don't think that's, that's an issue at all. We just wanted to explain, you know, where we're coming from and what we have to look at in the big picture. Because the last thing we want is to have one of these conversations where you're coming back at us going, well, now we've closed the whole town down, we got five employees that are out, that we're paying for COVID-19. Because the big thing with opening up this building is not so much, we talk about the benefit for the general public or the detriment to the general public, the more, the biggest population that's at risk with opening this up is town employees. Because they're the ones that are going back and forth through here and everything else. And what we've seen from other communities and other places that have been hit with an outbreak of COVID within, you know, you're responsible at that point in time if they contracted through work, that we have to pay them, whether they have benefits or they don't have benefit time at that point. So, you know, and then, and then from there, you have to take the precaution of having everybody go home, start working from home again. It's really, it's not just two steps back, we take 25 steps back at that point. So, yeah, it is a big reset, that's a good way to put it.
They're not, they're not clean and.
But we're definitely not insensitive to the fact that, we know that you guys are getting a lot of pressure from, from the vocal public.
Definitely.
That want to be heard, they want to be seen, and they want to be in these meetings. And not everybody agrees that, you know, on the severity of this situation, some think it's here, some think it's down here. We're just trying to take all the circumstances that we're being presented with and make the best choices globally for the whole entire community. But I've talked enough, and I haven't let Jim have enough chance because he spends more time looking at the numbers and the medical side of things, which is the most important. I mean, the state of New Hampshire as a whole, numbers wise, is doing excellent. You know, our numbers are continuing to trend down, we're below 20 new cases like for the last week and a half. One of the things that we don't know though is what summer vacations have done. There's been a lot of traveling, there's been a lot of, and you know, we under, we have an idea of what our town employees are doing in traveling, but we don't know what the public's doing. We've had, we've got people coming from wherever, here and from here going wherever and coming back. So once we start getting the people back to normal and they start melding, we don't know what's going to happen. And that's kind of the numbers, that's what we need to look at. We need to look at those numbers in town, in our county mostly, and then look at the state. There definitely could be some changes, we don't know what's going to happen there. We could have some spikes because of that. It's to be expected that there's going to be spikes, we just don't know where they're going to be, they're going to be somewhere in the country. And the people that went on vacation and then come back and then go to school is just one spot for it to spread. So we just have to, we really need that month and that time to really see what our town's doing, make sure we're safe. And just to add to that, when I did tell you that I met with school officials on other related items, I did find out that, at least at the central school level, they already have numbers back for who's coming back. And there are almost 75% of the entire student body is going, is planning on coming back. So it's not going to be just a small number, it's, I mean, because like you said, there's a lot of people out there that want to get back to normal, that want to be, so you have, a lot of families have opted, and also, a lot of them are kind of up against the wall with childcare. So, but I did hear that, you know, rough numbers is about 25%. I mean, 75% are coming back and about, rough, rough numbers were around 23 to 25% are going to stay remote or do some sort of hybrid, but the majority of our schools, especially the young.
But the majority of our school, especially the younger crowd, is all coming back to school as planned. So it is going to be a telling month, really it is. As to where we're going to stand here as a community number.
Once in general consensus, you mentioned people coming in, vacationing, and want to see how the summer's been going. You know the bay's been full all summer long. Over the last two months, and it was no different on Saturday with the ski show. People were distancing, I was watching a little bit, but, you know, there were families together, people together, the docks were full. It seemed like, you know, that we've had the bands playing on land bands then Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night. Sunday had church services, so there's been a lot going on. What is your take on that, how that's been? It seems like everything's been going quite well.
It seems that way. It all depends on if people are, if people are sick, if they're getting tested. And the numbers, the data we get only comes from if people use a New Hampshire address or an Alton address. If they're not using their Alton address when they're getting their test results, we'll never know about. And that is just something that we have to keep in the back of our mind, because a good percentage of those people in the bay and in the community through the summer all have out-of-state addresses or out-of-town addresses that we won't really go about. But all in all, to agree with Jim, I haven't, we haven't heard, you know, everything has been going very well at the back. It's a very positive.
The feedback I've gotten is everything's been positive, people have been doing well. And just on another note, everybody's been very thankful for the emergency management team and what's been going on. And that I've had people say to me as well. But people are getting, and some of them are getting impatient, surely would like to see things open maybe a little more quickly. But explaining things a little bit better right now helps.
Absolutely.
Try to get it open that close season.
I will say one other thing, and I want Jim to comment on this as well, because I'm not sure, we haven't talked about his feelings on it, but, and I don't know if you see it, but I am seeing information in the news about a couple of cases that are supposedly confirmed reinfected, reinfection cases, and I haven't, I don't, I haven't heard a lot of that, nothing coming from the state level on it, but. I've heard scuttlebutt about it, but I haven't heard anything from, you know, anybody I trust. Yeah, so right now, the information that I'm getting is coming more from overseas. And it's, again, researchers, and you're trying to sort out what's so much backlog. Opinion so far right now, these aren't just general, you know, these aren't, this isn't information put out by the general public, these are scientists, these are medical experts. But I have heard of three different scenarios already where there's cases that are supposedly confirmed reinfected cases. So that changes the entire dynamic. If, we will wait, I'm not going to go off on what I read, it's until it comes from a credible source at a state level, but I'm just. That changes the whole dynamic if you can possibly be reinfected. So if you've already had it once and you could be reinfected again, that means that people that did fight and survive it or had a mild case could actually be reinfected. So that comes down to the strain of virus mutating a little bit. And that, that happens all the time. I do know recently, they were working on a coronavirus vaccine rather in Europe, and what they've realized is it's only going to last about three months, and you have to redo that. So the antibodies don't seem to be staying. Could be the same thing if you get the virus, the same antibodies just not staying. So I don't, I don't know for sure what's going on behind that biologically. If you want, if it pleases the board too, we can, you know, establish right now that we will, let's plan on having another conversation in 30 days.
That would be very helpful.
And then that way, it gives us 30 days to meet as a group, talk about things as we move forward, look at the numbers, look at what's going on with the school. We plan on it, and then that way, when the public is asking you what's going on, we have definitive plans to reconnect and communicate again as to where we're at with that. That gives us time to think about what it's going to take for resources for disinfecting, and maybe you guys have time to think about some resources for financing.
I'm still, I've just laid it right out there, I agree with Bob. I don't think it'd be that much of a danger for the public first to do this with a limited number of people, a limited number of chairs being used to be disinfected, no matter how much more strain that we put on the personnel who do the disinfecting, to do six or seven chairs out there, that's what they normally do here after we have a meeting. But it's not just the chairs, it's the doors, the hallway, the railings, it's all the way up. They must do that when we have a meeting. So now we're talking, do the same thing they're doing now, but six or seven more chairs is what I'm saying.
I mean. But they're struggling right now, they're already struggling right now to keep up. They're doing, it's, we're barely making it right now with what we have open and what's being disinfected, because it was never being cleaned to this level before. Nobody cleaned to this level before. Cleaned, you know, disinfected. So there's two things that are happening, there's cleaning and disinfecting.
I guess there's a side, I mean, too, that we did do a good job opening up the restaurants down at the bay.
Yes.
But a lot of that is for people who don't live here in town, and we're talking about servicing the people that do live here in town. So that's one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up tonight.
Yeah, and the bathroom came in, you know, a few different reasons too, because we were also catering not only to the people coming out of town, but also the influx of revenues that brings to the community, but the local business owners. Because the business owners were the ones that were contending with the smell and what it was doing out there.
Well, and I guess costs for those.
Right, right, exactly, yeah. There was a lot of other things that went into it as well. I definitely, you know, I don't think anybody in here doesn't understand where that pressure's coming from and what, you know, what's at stake there when it comes to, you know, the public that doesn't want to be present, that doesn't want to do it. But I think it's still, you know, I think it's a little more prudent for us to at least proceed in this manner to the end, to give it the 30 days for the school to open and see where things, see if there's any fallout from that before we start looking at opening this up.
To admit, at the beginning of this meeting, I was really feeling as though that it was time to start entertaining the idea of opening up in here. And after further discussion this evening, and discussing a little bit further, and bringing the school into this as well, I think waiting a few weeks, three more weeks, if a month, would be okay. But now that we can at least reopen the conversation again, even in a couple of weeks, talk about it, see how it's going in two weeks from now. Because even in a month from now, it's going to be kind of early.
Well, we'll have a good idea as to whether or not there's been any indications of people leaving school with symptoms. You know, at that point in time, I mean, the schools are going to be on such a heightened alert right now for symptoms and everything going on, that, I mean, first, first talk of it, we're all going to know, we're all going to know. You know, and it's, I mean, everybody in the community is going to know. Because it's going to be a big panic on the portfolio. You think about how worried a parent is about their kids, the first thing they hear about is a classmate or a faculty member coming down with symptoms. They're going to be checking everybody, be a mad run for it. So yes, I mean, I think that we will know, I don't think it'll take a long time for us to be able to assess how things are going on that, on that level. Not as, I think it'll be a lot faster than if we were just looking at general numbers in the community. I think it takes longer for us to see, like, when we were waiting to see what. Was it Memorial Day weekend? Yeah, Memorial Day weekend was the first big holiday after the weather, and then we're waiting to see how the numbers came. And we kept waiting, like, weeks and weeks, about out almost 30 days or more, because it really, they couldn't see whether or not the surge was coming in yet. I think the school's going to be, we'll know, like I said, we're going to know a lot faster, a lot quicker. It's a concentrated area, we're not waiting for a whole community to report numbers. Just hoping September we can consider. Yeah.
Thank you.
More questions? Thank you, Emergency Management Board, great job you do. That's all I'll say.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
You guys want to stay in the house with your budget too?
Have a good one.
All right, we've got a few minutes.
Yes.
All right, we've got a few minutes.
Thank you also for the old tie. On these, on the bills last month, I owe the board and the town people an apology. When it says blue tie, that's the hardware they use at the store. The software. The software. So that, that's why it screwed me up. I've never seen anything say blue tie, blue tie, blue tie.
Sounds like an honest mistake to me.
Yeah.
I think that was a film that you mentioned in, I couldn't find any slips that were specifically, other than a few small slips. I didn't stand.
All right, we have to go back to public hearing first. Because we had people at the museum that did not hear us say reason if they had any questions. Oh, oh. And they would like, so I would like to reopen the public hearing for the traffic safety device.
Take a John.
Yeah, okay.
He's sitting out there, he's still over there. I think there's only one person over there.
Yeah, if you would. I'll take the screen back. There's Ron Love. Five minutes. Take a five-minute break?
Sure.
You want to take a five-minute break? Okay. Reconvene it? Josh, time to get a hold of.
The mics are on, the mic is on.
How you doing, sir? How you doing? I'm hanging in there. No, no, I know, I. You're a worker. I know, and I, you know, I hear, I hear it in town too, people come up and ask me the same thing. Wow. How you doing, huh? Your tree's okay? Yeah, yeah. Now the hard part begins. I got to get a machine up there.
Saturday, I left my favorite sub shop in Moltenborough. Little afternoon. On comes, well, 109 hadn't turned Wolfborough. On comes the emergency thing on the radio. Tornadoes were seen in Moltenborough in a osipie. And right after that report, suddenly there's all kinds of litter in the road, right? And then a tree, I had to go around off the road to get around. Time I get to Wolfborough, something had happened to something. So I guess I just was on the outskirts of a tornado.
Wow, yeah. They said, when I got the, when I got the state, they said, I think they all listed as osipie, there was a microverse, a true osipie in that area, so. When you were coming, you were coming back from.
109 hadn't turned Wolfborough. I was probably loosely in the Tufton area, Tufton Borough area.
John's walking up to Gilson Museum. Yeah, and there was no one else over there.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Unless you want to wait and see if there's anybody else on the computer.
Do you have anybody else raising their hand, Josh? All right, I will close public hearing at 4:50. Want to assess in the patent.
So would you like the department heads to explain every line item, or just go over the line items that have changed, or just wait for questions from you, how do you want to handle it this year?
The first one looks kind of easy to me. It looks like the big bike is the assessing contract it serves.
Yeah, right. We talked about. It's really the own bat, and there's a couple of ancillary costs that go with that. A little bit extra fuel for the truck, because I'm going to be using it an awful lot. We got 5,800 parcels, and we got to look at every single one of them. So there's a little bit of extra in that line. Postage, I'm going to have to send out postage and envelopes, so my building, or my office supplies is a little higher. Going to need more, a few more envelopes, and a little bit more postage.
My question is, is that baby increase a one-time thing?
Correct, yeah, it'll go right back down to, exactly, it'll be, it'll be, with the exception of any kind of wage adjustments for cost of living next year, to go right back to what last year's budget was.
I asked the board this, do we want to put that on a warrant article?
I recommend against that, because if it's voted down, we're going to be in trouble with the DRA.
Yeah, this is something we have to do.
Right.
I know we have to do it, but it's always been put on warrant articles.
I don't know.
When we ever reevaluated the town, we've always put it on a warrant article. That's why I'm just asking the board for the contract it serves.
You know, keep in mind too, when, if it's in the budget and the budget is approved, then later in the year in October, when you go to set the tax rate, you can take that same amount of money out of the fund balance and apply it towards the taxes, even so.
We're going to take all that money out of fund balance and put it on taxes. We're gonna, we're gonna take all that money out of fund balance and put it on taxes this whole year. Do it.
Jim, but what if budget gets voted down?
Man.
We don't do it, we go to the.
Yeah, default.
That would be included on a default budget, wouldn't it?
But they, no.
No, DRA would end up having to take the town to Board of Tax and Land Appeals and we would end up being court ordered to do it and it would come out with a general fund anyway.
But the board.
And that loses a count.
The board has already decided on this earlier when he first brought this to your attention.
And we are gonna get flack about it. I've gotten flack about it. But, you know, when I was asked about it by one person, I'd completely forgotten the situation of how we hired Rob and what the situation was gonna be. So if I get flack for that, I get flack for that. The fact of the matter is, that's why I asked my opening question. My understanding is this is a one-time thing, so.
And, and. It's gotta get done.
Yeah.
Correct, this is a one-time cost. Well, it's not a one-time, in a sense, the, the contract is a one-time cost. At the end of this process, I'll be a certified supervisor, I'll be doing in-house. So the, the line items for fuel and for the postage and stamps will occur every five years. That said, the, the contracting with the consultant to come in and do the revaluation 81-5 is just this year and that's it.
Same question I did, so thank you.
More questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, what are we gonna do? We gonna approve these now or later or?
I, I recommend that you do.
There's a budget committee from there, right?
Of course.
There's a budget committee from here.
Yeah.
Well, we can approve them as we do them or we can go through them later and. Okay. Cause like we have a fleet of that. Yeah. That's a pretty good size.
So, you know, these people are here tonight to explain their budget, answer questions.
We just, we just got them. I just got this at noon time today and I don't do business on a small one. Yes, I can, you know, I can understand. You know, you got, we got our big ones. Please, I wish.
Why you wanna?
Well, they were in your mailbox on Friday, you know, some from, you had them in your binders too, but, you know, that's okay.
I just.
I didn't see this.
I've, you know, I've done it on. I don't have to approve something tonight. We can, after we've gone through all, all of them, go back and, you know, how many in favor of that one? How many favor that one? And I got the figures that I.
Something aboard.
And the reasons.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we put off approving it.
I'll wait.
Yeah.
Okay. Bob, why don't we just wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just as I know what we're doing.
And you're waiting on, await?
No approvals.
Oh, no approvals.
Yeah, we're gonna wait on the approvals.
I hope it'll be coming back.
Do some of it? Some of the.
About two months.
And approve? Or do you want just the logic? Whatever the board wishes, Phil. Bob? Pick a vote.
Well, I feel, I, I think we should go one way or the other.
Okay, all right.
I think we should go through, at this point, I think we should go through the budgets. We're starting tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, we're getting our facts and figures. Once we've done them all, we can go through the whole lot and say, and vote on whether we vote.
Okay, that, that works for me.
That make sense to you, Bob? No problem with that.
Yeah. Virgil?
It makes, it's okay with me.
I, I hope you guys aren't disappointed walking out, not knowing.
Probably get it right the first time and then have to come back after.
And no problem with it. My, my only request would be, and I think a lot of department heads would feel this way, is that when the board does decide they're gonna sit through them, they're gonna vote on the budgets, that the department heads will, Liz can give us a heads up of what night that's going to be so that we can be present in case a question comes up. I've seen too many times over the years where somebody tries to cut a line that's a contractual agreement or it's something already made it to. And sometimes that's just not known offhand and, and not that we're gonna be there to, to interject every single time you've got the board tries to make a decision. I'm just saying that we're a resource that can be present and answer any questions.
It, it actually doubles the amount of time you folks have to vote into.
Right, right.
But if, if you guys are willing to do that, I think that makes sense. Yeah.
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may speak too, since we're still in August and the budgets continue to come in every day, once they are prepared in, in the system and printed out and put in your mailbox, I'm gonna have someone from the office give you a call every time there's a budget ready so that you can come in and get it.
Okay. That'd be helpful.
It's unfortunate tonight, you know, that some of you didn't have them, you know, until tonight, you know. So hopefully that will avoid that.
Yes.
Liz, do you have all the budgets in front of you prepared by department heads now?
No.
You don't?
No.
Oh, darn.
Because it takes the month of August to do that.
Takes the department head until through the month of August to prepare a budget?
Yes.
Uh, how did the chief get his prepared?
Would you like to answer that?
Oh, I didn't, I mean, the biggest thing for me is I've been, I've been a chief longer than anybody. As far as that, I mean, as far as department head, I've been a chief for 13 years now. So my bud, my town, I mean, my department's been running under my. So I, I mean, I am just not gonna, you know.
I, I've been a municipal of Pupi, a department. And I never had a problem getting my budget done when I was told I haven't done it. I just can't understand why all departments can't have their budgets done by a certain time.
So, so just to follow up on that, Bob, because you are new to the board, the month of August, the full month of August, is when I ask the department heads to get their budgets to me. We're not even to the end of August yet. And in September, they go to the selectmen. But this has been rushed forward a little bit?
We are ahead of ourselves.
Yes, yes.
Usually we all get until September 15th.
Okay. We're only not looking at it until middle of September.
That's why I mentioned on August 10th, at the August 10th meeting, Bob, that, when there was discussion about that, and I mentioned that it's only August 10th. Probably remember that.
All right, any more questions for assessing patent? No. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Good luck.
Please shout out, please.
I will.
Thank you.
Next clock is next.
Yeah. Thanks for aggravating everybody. We'd like to take more.
Hi Lisa. It's okay. You can leave. Oh, she's crazy, but it's not, not a heat wave right now.
Wow, still. You're pretty red.
It's not from the AC or the mail.
So from what I can see, the biggest jump here is the tax printing signs. 700 to 1700, that looks like the biggest increase.
And that was because last year I had encumbered money and now I have to put it back because I spent it this year, so.
Office supplies have gone.
That's because of the cleaning?
Oh, that would make sense.
Yeah. And yeah, I had covered $942 last year for tax building.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't think I have any other questions.
Yeah, we don't have many questions for Lisa Grusley. One second.
You've done well.
Questions at all? Thank you, Lisa.
Five elections, negative two elections.
Two elections?
Set pretty high already now.
That's 41-40.
So they, they're not approving tonight, they're just reviewing.
So how did we do when we changed that? The stipend to the hour? We have one person making all the money or is everybody still chipping in? They're all.
They come in, one of them, he comes in weekly and goes downstairs for two, three or four hours. Especially now.
Yeah.
There's so many new voters there.
Well, houses are selling quick. Houses are selling quick up here.
So.
So I see a reduction of over $8,000, uh, and I guess because less, less elections. Yeah. Any questions from the board?
What is actually the, the time election coding?
Um, the machine, the, um, AccuVote machine, we get memory cards and they have to be coded. And so down at LHS, they have the, we get the machine and they do the coding for the state. The, we get charged for that. The town ballot is, depends on how big the ballot is and usually these general elections and primaries are above a thousand.
Excellent.
Lisa, I got a question for you on 002. Moderator?
Yes.
One election at 200, reelection 200, deliberative session 200. You got 400.
Take one election at 200 per election and then one deliberative?
Oh, there's only two there. It's not counted as 30. One election at 200.
Yeah.
Pre-election 200. Deliverer at 200.
What's the second one you're saying? Cause I don't have that. I have one election at 200 per election and then one deliberative.
Virgil, it's the way it's ordered.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, if one election at 200 per election, then I just kind of.
Oh, one election.
See how I put like the 124 in this one?
Okay.
Is the hours always 150 hours? If all.
Per, per year?
Per year.
We really didn't.
That.
Last year was the first year that we paid them by the hours, so it's kind of.
So that guess.
Estimate.
It's an estimate of 150 hours?
Per supervisor for the whole year.
Yeah.
And, and next year, um, they added some because they have a 10-year purge of the checklist. Every 10 years is a purge done. And with 10 years ago, I can't remember much time the supervisors had to put into it nor would I, wasn't really involved. So, um, so I just, um, added. 10 hours per supervisor.
Laura, you got some?
Well, I had the break time that you asked for for the supervisors.
Oh, okay.
So Ray Johnson put in 83 hours this year for $880. Sharon Kirsten has worked 254 and a half hours for $27.99 already. So she's all, that's three grand already. And Ruth Karen Morrison has made $1,086 and she's probably put in 90 hours this year.
So any more questions? No?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Goodnight Lisa. Goodnight.
Thank you.
Bye.
Take care.
Goodnight, Lisa.
All right, next is, release the patent.
I've been timing all these other ones and I don't expect to go any longer than that. Well, I think you'll, I think you'd be pleasantly surprised.
Bottom line.
Um, yeah, the, um. So the, all the change, I can go through if you want and highlight some of the changes, but most all of them are payroll related.
What was it?
Payroll increases.
Absolutely.
Uh, most everything else has gone down to some degree. Um, one thing that you'll see that was a intentionally increase is 269 under investigation.
That's just where my question was going, right there.
Right there, yeah, there's a, $3,700 was added to that line because it's an annual service for the Celebrate machine. The Celebrate machine, if you remember, was the cell phone dumper that we bought. And every year, there's a $3,700 fee because that's how quick cellphone changes, or cellphones change, the models and the years, the makes and everything. So every year, they come in and they reprogram or they send us updates to that so that there's not a phone on the market that we can't dump. So it, you know, we literally.
They already paid itself.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. And, and that's an invaluable tool for us as far as being able to dump and cell, and cellphones and track the information. But it also doesn't just dump phone calls, text messages, it does photos, videos, everything. So we solve a lot of crimes with that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that machine's paid for itself since we've got it.
Sure, absolutely. Most part, if you look through, most of it's either gone down.
Yeah. On your reference material, at 134. You only spent.
Oh, that's a, that's a annual, annual fee?
Oh.
Yeah, so we, we don't buy individual, we have the Lexus Nexus. We have like, it almost looks like an encyclopedia set of all the law books and every year they do an addendum update to those instead of giving us new books. Uh, and at the end of the year, we pay a fee. So that's why it goes out all at once.
In 113, training took a $1,000 hit. Um, yeah, special training coming in, oh. On 113.
You were 4,000, you went to five.
No, 2020 was five, it was five this year. In 2019, it was four.
Four, that's right.
So 2020 went to five.
But you're going to be spending more this year?
No, I level funded their five against the same.
Yeah, I mean, you've only spent $3,000.
And that's because most of our training got canceled because of COVID. Trying to do it online, but a lot of, we couldn't have, you know, couldn't put that many people together.
Don't think I have any questions.
I think it's a good budget.
I think it's pretty well worth it.
Pretty well, much the same to lunch here.
Done a good job on this one.
Put one comment on, Mr. Chief.
Yes.
Before you benefit buyout, that's down.
Yes. Yeah, the reason for that was a one-time deal this year. We had an employee that took advantage of a buyout option after 10 years on sick time, that's what that spike was last year, was that one-time fee. So I immediately brought it right back down this year, so. Yeah, we'll be just fine with that.
But you don't go anywhere, we won't use that. Think it looks good.
Excellent.
I don't remember how we decided we're going to do that. The pickup truck?
We're waiting on the Humvee.
Who are we going to pay for that pickup truck?
It's a Salahumvee, it's a Salahumvee and four Cruisers.
Only four? Come on. No, we, any vehicles are paid for through our revolving.
Fine, okay.
Yeah, so any residual amount, if the board decided, out of the private doing.
Yeah, I thought that's what it was, I saw it, not the budget.
Yep.
No other questions on, or any questions on this side, I think he's well prepared.
Yes, I think it looks good.
I have one question.
Tires?
Yes.
I see you kept it on $1.
Yes.
How does that work, tires? Do we have to buy the tires, or that's what we?
No, we buy the tires, but because our cars are fairly new and we had tires stockpiled before we traded the other ones in. We were smart, we didn't put new tires on them before we traded them in, so we had a stockpile and we had the tires. The other thing we were able to do, which made things good, is these all come with a full-size spare. So we got nine new tires out of the spare tires because they won't fit the trunk with everything that we have, the equipment. So we took all the tires out, stockpiled them, so it worked out pretty good. So we can get one more year out of what we have without having to.
More questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
I think we're doing emergency management.
Went a lot easier than I thought.
Well, set for now.
For now, here we go.
I think it looks good.
It looks good, I think I'm going to be okay. You don't.
Looks good.
Do you, we do emergency management too?
Emergency management.
So, yeah, so the only big change to emergency management, and you know, I'm up for suggestions on this, but.
Oh, great.
At 100, line 100, for preparation and response to emergency management, I put $10,000 in after this year. Because I just don't know what we're going to expect going into the new year with the COVID angels. I do think we're going to be getting back to normal, but our normal is going to change, there's going to be.
This was a lesson for all towns, with this COVID and everything hitting like it did.
Yeah, so I.
It's not going to change forever.
Right.
Sure.
And I didn't want to be crazy with it by saying, well, we could spend $50,000 this year. I was trying to be realistic, but $10,000 to me just felt like a reasonable number to ask the taxpayers for in preparation for what needs we might have coming into this.
Seems like we seem to get into it every few years.
Yeah.
Ice storms and tornadoes.
Yeah. Oh, and yeah, they had that, we were just talking about, they had that microburst that just came through.
Yeah, Wolfboro.
Awesome.
Water.
I just missed that. They brought a tree down in the road in front of me before I got there.
Really?
Yes. And there was debris all over the road, I was coming from Oldenborough. Time I got to Wolfboro, sun's out, no debris anywhere, unbelievable, I just missed it.
You were sweating out for the speech show.
I'm sure you were, yeah.
You got black over there though.
Oh, it did, when my son was on duty, when they had some trees go down a lumbay road, that they had to redirect traffic.
I don't have a problem with $10,000 in there though, have something there.
Well. Gee, so far, you've only spent $3,000, right? That's what it says here on the second line, preparation, primary response.
Right, we only spent, well, we spent $4,394. Well, we don't have the same one, maybe.
You're on 100, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm wondering if I have the same printout, what's the date of your printout?
Um, 8/19.
Yep. Oh, I'm.
8/19.
Yeah, mine's different, but, but mine's older, so it should have.
You added that on a higher number.
You know what, his is 18/18, I think what might have happened, if you don't mind me looking. We made, okay, so what we ended up doing was making an adjustment, now see, oh, that was actual from last year. So that was just a budget, that was my actual from last year.
Yeah.
There's no actual through this year up to this point, that's just what I requested last year.
Yeah.
Was the actual from last year?
The actual, last year was 43, yeah, 4,390. So we went over last year a little bit, if I do, last year, but, and then this year, we're into COVID. But I will say that some of the changes, you see, there's a bunch of added lines down at the bottom. Those were added as a result of COVID-19, and one of those lines, 205 is the one that you want to keep an eye on at the end of the year because that's where Laura's compiling all of the COVID-19 expenses from all the departments. So all this extra funding is going to be tallied in that line, so we'll be able to see that. So far.
Show us what we get paid for.
So what I've done is I've put everything there, and when we got our first reimbursement from the state, I removed that amount from there. So basically, it doesn't count for us because we don't fund that. So anything that's going to be left there is what we're going to be responsible for, or FEMA, depending on when we get that.
I would like to see where we're setting, what we owe and what we've received.
I have that in the memo's department, yeah. But I just didn't want like, all your different departments to be so far over, you stick it all in one, you just have to worry about.
Right, and then when you see, if you see that that's zeroed out, that means we've been reversed for every expense. But right now, we've been reversed for all of our expenses, so we're doing very well, doing very well. But, you know, like I said, it's, we've been fortunate so far, I just don't want to take that.
Hit me for granted, it's coming.
You say it's $7?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, like I said, I mean, I'm only basing that off of the simple fact of what we've had to spend, sort of anticipating maybe a few residual expenses that are going to carry over, not knowing what's going to happen, not any. You know, it's really just a, I don't want to say a guess, it's a calculated guess, a guesstimate. You know, as to where we're, we might, what we might need, so. You know, if it, if, let's just put it this way, if the board goes through and calculates all the budgets, and you look at the number that you're going to be presenting to the town, and you think you need to find an area where you can, you know, cut a few thousand dollars to help things out, be this far. Rather see it go from somewhere there that we're kind of unsure of, than just, you know, another line, some, in a budget that, you know, is being accounted for and has, you know, has a purpose already.
Right. Any more questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Absolutely. I think after a long night, that's all I have for you tonight, unless you need me for anything else. We good?
Streetlights.
Streetlights? Oh, I'm not on that one, dude.
That was on me. I'm motioning to shut them all off.
I heard it was really walking there, or, I can't sure if you're a little.
I hate my police.
I mean, the boats.
Yeah, we had probably 40 at one point out there, and it was a good thing we had five police boats, and Anne Marie patrol. We had two boats on one end, the south end of the bay, but the rest of us were all, they're holding it back. They kept running.
Yeah, the following, the following. Yeah, I saw them all parked out, looked like fireworks night. All the boats anchored out on the, outside Sandy Point there. Yeah, it's good to see them, so.
Thanks again.
Absolutely. Have a good night, everybody, take care.
Thank you.
I make a motion to shut them off.
What, straight lights?
Mm-hmm. Shut them all off.
Yeah, it's up $500.
Yeah, so.
There we add.
I thought we cut some back last year.
I thought we did.
In 2019, the budget, this budget was a little over $33,400. So for 2020, and I didn't know that until the end of the year, by that time, it's too late. So in 2020, there's only a budget there of $33,000, so I've increased the 2021 budget to $33,500 to try to cover at least, you know.
Now, when we went through this before, we were going to do a streetlight study.
It's going to be.
And we're going to give, we're going to be given a list of the streetlights that the town owns, so we can go around and look at it. Got my wish jacked, been a year.
I gave that to all of you a year, maybe even two years ago.
I haven't seen no list of streetlights.
Get to you again.
Didn't we at one time, used to shut some of the lights off down at the bay in the winter?
We used to shoot them out. We used to go out and practice before deer season.
I thought at one time, they used to, they used to shut some of them off, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I think so.
Oh. My lifetime.
But they certainly could be so shut off.
I was. Well, I think some of them around town, you know, you've got to have them at the intersections and stuff.
Yeah.
And in the middle of town here, but some of them around aren't to public use really, that the town owns. And I think that's what we've got to take a look at and start shutting some of them down.
See the ones down at the bay, I think a lot of those.
They all are, they all are. They all are. All the way out to Sandy Point.
Did we have one toward him at the end of Dudley Road?
No, we haven't pulled that. It's down below there, that's the one that they were complaining about, they want to move it up because it's down by Vine.
No, you mean on 28, at the intersection of 28? So there's not one there, it is a one or two telephone pole seller.
Okay, okay.
And really, it should be there, of all the places it should be, it should be there, and I think it's in some guy's front yard.
Well, to me, if you put a streetlight there, yeah, it's in Judge Steve, uh, Judge.
The next one. In 2016, I contacted Eversource, those three streetlights are Eversource, right there on 28. And you have to pay them to remove the fixtures, you have to buy the LED fixture. I talked to them about, can we change them to LED, and can we take that one that is the closest to Dudley Road and put it at the intersection to Dudley Road? And that's, and I remember I came back to the board, it was going to cost them significant money because you have to have a special electrician do it. And bucket truck, and then you have to put the old hardware on the ground, and then Eversource will come and pick it up and everything, and it just, it just never came to fruition. We didn't have the money for it.
We had another situation where somebody was allowing parking or something, snowmobile trails, and they wanted a streetlight that's up on Alton Mountain, the end of Alton Mountain, up on Julius's.
Mr. Julius, he wanted.
We opened up.
For the municipal trail.
And it makes it easier for us because we, when we plow, we can get down and make a sweep back up.
Well, he wanted it at the end of its driveway.
Right.
And the Conservation Commission paid for that, the selectmen approved it, but they weren't going to pay for it, so the Conservation Commission paid for it.
Which means the town pays for it still.
Yeah.
There are a lot of them in the bay, and I wonder if every other one could be on a timer. That's a different electric company, that's the co-op, deal with three companies.
I don't know.
So what does that mean? We still pay the bill?
Yeah.
We still pay the bill, but what I'm saying is, there's quite a few lights, and they're on all from dusk till dawn. And I'm wondering if every other one could be on a timer to shut off.
Like, did they off-season?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, exactly, the summer, but the rest of the year.
But the rest of the year is not necessary to be on all night long when it gets dark at 4:00 in the afternoon. And, you know, sun's coming up at 6:00 in the morning, it's a lot longer, we shut some of those off, and I think that would help considerably.
The question you're making of the electric company is that the board is in agreement with?
If anybody else agrees, if that's worth looking into.
Well, I think it's something we should look at.
Okay, so that, this is what happens every time, it's something we should look at, which actually I do agree, but nobody looks at it because we need telephone, we need poll numbers that are on the polls to tell the electric company which ones, how much it would cost for which ones to be.
Can we ask the electric companies about it, to feel if they have the numbers on the polls?
They're right on the poll.
Right. Yeah, telephone, I know that, I know that.
But they're, they're going to say which ones do you want us to, somebody needs to.
Get the numbers.
Yeah, and it's going to be at night.
It's a field trip for your office.
Figure out which ones should be, not be off, and then you have to go back during the day to get the numbers.
Field trip for your office.
That's a channel, I think, what we want to know is, if.
What's a good question?
For six months, if we shut half of the lights off, how much of a savings would that be?
And even if it's.
Would it be worth the while?
Is it worth our lives? Got to look to see how much it's going to be to shut off and how much to turn on.
Yeah, I mean, the total, you know, is it worth doing, I don't know.
I mean, it is lit up completely down here, all, all night long, every night, 365 days a year. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the wintertime, that could be shut down, at least half of it.
So how about this, what if I contact the electric company and I ask them if this is something that is possible?
Is it doing so?
And if so, how much, how is it done, how much? And then I'll bring it back to you guys, and then you guys can figure out which ones you want.
Perfect.
To be shut off, and if we have the funds to do it and.
Yeah, because they must have a, how much it would save us and how much.
They would know.
Well, in the first place, we should know how many lights are down there, start off with.
Right, well, that's right. Count how many we actually have, and then if feasible, to have half of them shut off. I think, because they can drive around and look at it, because you're going to be surprised where some of them are located.
Okay. You can see it now. They're $50, but costs you $2,000 for the timer.
Exactly, yeah.
Or, it's not necessarily have a timer.
No, they could, they could shut those off, they could shut those off, I don't know how they do it, but they can. Public service.
But Liz, to answer your question, yes, please, if we could just call them and see if it's feasible, if it would make sense for them to do even a survey on it, to see if it would, what it would save the town, cost-wise.
I got the basics, and then you guys can decide if you want to take it a step further.
Yeah.
Because they do this for other towns, there's something to do.
And can we still have the lists that I don't think I've seen of all of them in town?
See, a couple of boards have reviewed this, we need to meet, or, or a little committee, and people went out at night. Yeah, went out at night, selectmen and stuff.
That is the biggest lit-up area in town.
Oh, it is, it is.
I could try and do this for a week.
Let's, let's locate to it, and then Liz, give them a call. If you'd like to do that, please. $17,000 worth of bills, and I was screaming about it, I were $33,000.
For short term, it's going to be easy.
That's, any more questions on streetlights? Any more questions on streetlights? Hearing none, we'll vote short-term interest.
Interest short-term.
Or interest short-term.
Does anybody need an explanation on this?
Uh-uh.
I think a dollar's too much.
We make that pretty simple.
With this software. With this software.
He can't find it.
All right, hearing no questions on short-term interest. Do you like to approve this budget? So at least we approve one?
Well, we, I thought we agreed on it with.
That's, that's right, we can't do any of them, we're gonna do them all.
Yeah, okay. One big last-minute session, boy, we'll just go through there. I mean, I'll be able to look at my notes before that last session because I'm making the notes as we're going.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to other business as deemed necessary.
So Mister Chairman, I do, uh, I am requesting of the board that um, the board go into non-public session.
Okay. Make a motion that we go into non-public session. RSA ninety-one dash A, comma, two, comma, A. A second.
Second.
Phil?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Virgil, yes. We are at a non-public and in public session, I make a motion to seal the minutes of non-public.
Second.
All those.
Oh, wait a minute.
Uh, uh, uh.
Before you do that, it's um, to not divulge, oh, wait a minute, Josh, are we going yet? Are we on yet? Okay, it's to not divulge.
I can read this one.
And um, just look at the A, B, and C. So I recommend.
Make a motion that we not divulge the non-public minutes under A, B, and C.
Uh, not C, just A and B.
All right, A and B, forget C.
Yeah, so A is um, reputational.
Do you want me to re-dose?
B is render any proposed action ineffective. And then C is terrorism, so this definitely is nothing.
This is terrorism.
It is, not definitely terrorism.
Okay.
Who seconded that?
Paul did.
Okay.
Phil?
So we made, we made a motion to not divulge one.
Baby, A and B.
Yes.
Paul? Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Virgil, yes. All yeses.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion that we adjourn. Second. Yes. Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Uh, we adjourned it, seven forty-five.